Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Lodi Moore's Parade on Antay Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Uh, today is Class 110, Class 110. Uh, what do we learn in Class 109? Well, we're finishing up with the Declaration of Intervention, right? That the United States wrote on behalf of Ukraine, right? So Ukraine took Russia to court, to the International Court of Justice, and several European states, approximately about 41 European states, uh, decided to support Ukraine, right? So they all wrote a declaration of intervention. But what is it about a declaration of intervention that Moore should understand? Well, it's almost like having a class action lawsuit. You, you have to also put on the record that you were putting on the record about the fact that this was the injury, right? Even though you may not be the actual party plaintiff, but you're still a party to a particular complaint, right? So the injury may be direct or the injury may be indirect, right? So with the Moores, we're dealing with a scenario where sometime we've been directly injured and sometime we'll be indirectly injured. How is it that we're indirectly injured? Well, anytime a columnist does something to Moroccans, that's a direct injury and an indirect injury to all Moroccans, right? You know, the United States is very proud to say, "Don't mess with Americans," right? Well, Moores seem to have that same sentiment, right? We must have the same patriotism to Morocco. Everybody on planet Earth should understand that if you mess with one Moore, you mess with all the Moores, right? If you injure one Moore, you've injured all the Moores. Well, that sounds good, but how do the Moores defend themselves? We're talking self-defense. Well, the first thing you do, you, you, you start to defend yourself with a pen, right? That's called politics. And from there, you start to escalate from there, certain reforms. So the Declaration of Intervention is one of those reforms that you use a pen to start to make your argument. You use a pen to become a party to a suit, right? A class action lawsuit commonly known as ergo amis parties who write a declaration of intervention, right? So what is it that we should really learn from why we went over what the United States wrote? The number one thing Moores have to understand when you look at those 26 pages that we went over. The United States of America and the United States never talked about their own constitution. They never talked about Ukraine's constitution. They never talked about Russia's constitution. Everything that were invoking was about international law. And Noah Droual Lee said, "Learn from the Europeans." What is that we're learning from the Europeans? They have mastered the art of enforcing international law, and this is what Moores have to learn. The art of enforcing international law, the customs of international law, the periphery norms of international law, just coaches. We have to stop talking about enforcing the Constitution, United States of America. The United States of America wasn't talking about their constitution when they were supporting Ukraine. So why is there Moores keep talking about the United States of America's constitution? Nobody talks about their constitution when they have a state-on-state dispute. Constitutions are set down and international law is picked up. So therefore, we must ask the question, why do Moores keep talking about enforcing the Constitution? It's because, A, the Moores are admitting they don't have their own. Number two, they're admitting that they're stateless because they don't have their own constitution. But what is the real reason why Moores keep talking about enforcing the Constitution? It's because the reality is the Moorish-American concept is a brain. It's being commercialized. So therefore, the Moores are teaching other Moores to enforce domestic law while simultaneously, the United States of America is out there enforcing international law on a world stage. Two-thirds of everything the United States does is about international law. They're always operating on an international law plane. Their sphere of influence is always about international law. But the Moores been studying domestic law. Wrong concept. Miseducation. It's kept us in a status of subjugation. So in Class 109, leading up to Class 109, what have we, what should we truly take away from this Declaration of Intervention that the United States wrote? Well, they were invoking international law. They were invoking provisions of the Charter. They were provoking provisions of a resolution that came from the Charter members, commonly known as the Genocide Convention of 1948. The United States was invoking, what else? The statutes of the International Court of Justice, Articles 62 and 63. The United States mentioned, what else? Did they add a convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969, Articles 31 and 32? But yet, the Moores are talking about the domestic laws of the United States while the United States is out there invoking international law. So you must understand something, Moores. We gotta get back into Islam. What do I mean? I set law and master. We gotta master self, and what about self? We gotta understand the word "Moore" is an international word in itself. Anybody knows anything about the Moores? The Moores kept saying, "Moores are all over planet Earth." Well, if that's the case, we're an international people. Then why are we not studying international law? So we have to course correct, all of us, and we all have to work together. The competent Moores have to work with the incompetent Moores. The competent Moores, at some point, still gotta work with the sellout Moores because we're all Moores. We gotta figure out how to put this thing together. We gotta work together. But don't get it twisted. The sellout Moores gonna have to make some decisions about what they're gonna do to course correct. But that does not mean that competent Moores should not extend a dollar branch to say, "Hey, let's wipe the slate clean. We gotta start all over." But let me remind the Moores of something. ANPAC study session has been around for two years, since July of 2021. Two years, but this is Class 110. What have the Moorish-American teachers done to course correct thus far? Nothing. What have the Negro, Black, and colored spiritual leaders, i.e. the ministers, right? Pastors, reverends, bishops? What have they done to course correct? Nothing. What have the Black people done to course correct? Hardly nothing. NAACP, nothing. What have the Moorish-Americans done that are at the temples, i.e. the sheiks? And the grand sheiks, and the national grand sheiks? To course correct, what have they done to course correct? Nothing. And I stand here, 110 classes in thus far, two years. And I continue to tell these truths with reference points, and the reference points are what? Self-evident. And our people have yet to course correct. Same thing Noah Droual Lee said. Our people are basically hard-headed, stiff-neck, mean group of people that won't do anything until it's at a point of a sword. And it, it just is what it is. So therefore, the rest of us competent Moores have to move on, and everybody else is gonna have to play catch-up. Because the whole time, Noah Droual Lee was operating on an international level. Your brother Il Malik Shabazz was operating on an international level. Marcus Garvey was operating on an international level. And what have the Moores done on an international level? Nothing. What has the, these organizations who represent Black people, have they been operating on an international level? No, it's all been about civil rights. So what we have to understand, Moores, we have to study the Europeans, but we can also study the African states. There's 55 African states. Now, now, let me get it straight. Just because you're born in Africa doesn't mean Africa is in you. You got states in Africa that people say they're not Africans. So therefore, they're born in Africa, but Africa is not in them. Same things happened over here with the Moores. I keep telling the Moores they're just Moroccans, period. And it means nothing though, because they don't think Moroccan is in them. So that's why it is Islam. I set law and master, it's self-determination. But you can never enforce international law until you understand who you are. As long as you stay in a status of cognitive dissonance, then you're delaying your own justice. And you'll continuously get what you've always gotten until you do something different. So at least, started studying the Declaration on Intervention. What we have to take away from it is it's all about international law. But you cannot get access to international law without what? A charter, excuse me, a, a state and a constitution. Your state, your constitution gives you access, it's a portal to get access to international law. And where is international law located? It's located in the United Nations Charter. But what does the United Nations Charter represent? It is an intergovernmental organization, an HR department, where all states have agreed that that's a neutrality location when you find international law. They're referees. And they're gonna maintain peace and security on planet Earth. So the Charter came into existence because states recognize the Charter. The Charter doesn't recognize states. And our liberty and our salvation is through international law. And that's what the Moores have to understand about me going over Ukraine versus Russia. Keep it in mind, we're not gonna go over the actual case. What was the true purpose of reading it? So that Moores can understand how to put together a class action lawsuit. We'll get there. These are steps. It's like a chess game. We're positioning ourselves. But first, we have to understand the pieces and how the pieces move, and then start to align those pieces, because chess pieces move in combination. A declaration of intervention is a positioning move. You're moving in combination. And the more chess pieces you bring to start to put pressure on another opponent's piece, chances are, if you outnumber that one piece you're imposing some threat on, you're gonna take that material with you. And so far, the Moores didn't understand how to play, play the political game of chess. But now, we're learning. But at the same time, we gotta understand there gonna be a lot of people that's just gonna refuse to wanna be a part of international law. Well, why is that? It's because they had put compensation over the need of decolonization. They put compensation over the necessity of decolonization. They've accepted naturalization over decolonization because they're very comfortable with the compensation they're receiving. So you must understand something, Moores. The biggest problem that we're gonna have as Moores is not necessarily colonists. It's actually the obstructionist. And who are the obstructionist? Anyway, anyone who get in the way of decolonization. You're a Moorish-American so-called scholar and teacher, and you're not teaching international law, then you are an obstructionist. You're holding your people back. You're an obstructionist. Anyway, let's go ahead and get in the class. All right. As a reminder, here's ANPAC's contact information, okay? All right. Okay, Moores? Today, we're gonna start reading over the United Nations Charter, Chapter 7. Okay, we've been building up to this point, okay? Now, Chapter 7 is about action with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression, right? And I started to narrow it down to these three words. Threats, breaches, and aggression to the peace, right? That's what this is all about. But let's go to the board real quick. Let's, let's already start looking at a summary. Why are we getting ready to go over Chapter 7, which is Articles 39 through 51? Well, here's why, right? So I'll give the Moores a quick snapshot, right? Quick brief to understand why we're reading it. Okay, here we go. First of all, what I have on the board, okay? The Charter of the United Nations, Chapter 7, Articles 31 through 59. The title is "Actual Respect to Threats to the Peace, Breaches of the Peace, and Acts of Aggression." Drop-down box. Okay, what is Chapter 7 really about? Okay, here we go. "Chapter 7 invokes counterterrorism reforms against any acts of aggression and the use of force by colonists in Morocco." Did you hear what I just said? So what did I do? I'm taking Chapter 7, I'm making it more Jermaine to the Moores. Because international law is what you call generic law. Now, you have to make it more specific to your own needs because all politics is law. So what is the Moores dealing with right now? We're trying to decolonize, right? So during the acts of decolonization, we're gonna be dealing with things like what? We, we're gonna deal with threats. We're gonna deal with breaches. And we're gonna deal with aggression. So colonists are doing that. What is it really called when colonists are doing? Listen. "Chapter 7 invokes counterterrorism." So anything the colonists are doing is actually an act of terrorism. They're trying to terrorize you, Moores, while the Moores at varying stages of events. Just like the KKK, right? The FBI, at times, is a terrorist organization. The CIA, at times, operates as a terrorist organization. The police force, at times, acts as a terrorist organization, right? And what is it all about? It's about control through use of force, manipulation, right? Cohesion, right? Collusion to drag you back into this imperialism mentality that colonists have. They wanna maintain control. Right, so Chapter 7 will start to give us the fundamental understanding of what reforms, what options do we have on dealing with this? How do we use a pen? But when a pen does not prevail, what do we do next? Well, we have a right to petition the United Nations. However, when it comes to what's called self-defense, because of some type of immediate use of force, someone's using use of force, Moores have a right to utilize what's called self-defense. You can fight fire with fire. What gives us the right to do it? We'll talk about that, okay? All right, let's get into the class. But I just wanted to give Moores a summary of what we're about to understand, okay? Make this Jermaine about Moores, right? I don't want Moores reading the Charter by itself because it will be a boring read if you don't see yourself as a character in it, right? Okay, so, okay, from the top.
Uh, "Chapter 7, Action with Respect to Threats to the Peace, Breaches of the Peace, and Acts of Aggression. Article 39, the Security Council shall determine the existence of any threat to the peace, breach of the peace, or act of aggression, and shall make recommendations or decide what measures shall be taken in accordance with Articles 41 and 42 to maintain or restore international peace and security."
Okay, thank you very much. So Article 39. "The Security Council shall determine the existence of any threat to the peace, breach of the peace, or act of aggression, and shall make recommendations or decide what measures shall be taken in accordance with Articles 41 and 42 to maintain or restore international peace and security." So right now, in Chapter 7 of the Charter, now you're starting to find out, okay, who's ultimately responsible for maintaining peace on planet Earth? Well, you could easily say that it's, it's the responsibility of all states. That's the generic understanding. But in any scenario, there must be a governing power, a referee, to come in to help with any dispute. So the Charter says, "Okay, we're gonna leave it up to the Security Council to be a, have a major say in what happens with peace on planet Earth." All right, so who's the Security Council, okay? The United Nations Security Council, they call themselves the P5, the Permanent Five. It consists of who? Well, you, you got the United States, you got Great Britain, you got Russia, you got France, and you got China. Permanent Five, the Security Council, responsible for security, security of planet Earth. But yet, these five are the main ones keeping up all the belligerence on planet Earth. Right, so it's, it's counterintuitive. Right, now, at the same time, at minimum, of three of them are colonists. The United States is a colonist, Great Britain is a colonist, right? And France is a colonist. Right, minimum of three of them are colonists. So you have to understand, when you're, when you're dealing with this, Moores, you're looking at something that's what you call antiquated. Antiquated means it's old. This was established in 1945. Now, this was established in the 20th century. We're in the 21st century now. There will be reforms when it comes to the P5. There will be reforms. This will not last. The world is getting pushed back to this. But let me let the Moores know something as well. If the world, if the Charter is about decolonization and human rights, self-determination, if the Charter is supposed to assist with decolonization, right? Then how can these three flags, 1, 2, 3, at the very least, continue to stand if the indigenous people are getting back into self-government? France has Moores in that territory that have been colonized and naturalized. Great Britain has Moores that's been colonized and naturalized. The United States has Moores that's been colonized and naturalized. Just them three alone, Moores are gonna wake up and start to get back into statehood through their declarations of independence. But don't get it twisted. There's Moores in Russia, and there's Moores in China. So don't focus on these five Moores. This is what you call temporary, even though they say it's permanent, it's not permanent. Because as the indigenous people keep waking up, they will continue to make their proper claims all over planet Earth. So take a picture because this will not stand much longer. That must be understood. So as we start to get into Chapter 7 of the Charter, don't start overthinking the fact that this is the P5 and they're gonna have a decision over Moores, because that's not necessarily the truth. We're talking about that more in depth later on, okay? All right, let's get back to the reading. So Article 39 says, "The Security Council shall determine the existence of any threat to the peace, breach of the peace, act of aggression, and shall make recommendations or decide what measures shall be taken in accordance with Articles 41 and 42 to maintain or restore international peace and security." All right, let's continue.
"Article 40, in order to prevent an aggravation of the situation the Security Council made before making the recommendations or deciding upon the measures provided for in Article 39, call upon the parties concerned to comply with such provisional measures as it deems necessary or desirable. Such provisional measures shall be without prejudice to the rights, claims, or position of the parties concerned. The Security Council shall duly take account of failure to comply with such provisional measures."
Okay, so in other words, Security Council may institute some type of reform that helps the two parties who have a dispute. All right, so, wait, wait a minute. What if the Moores are having a problem with the United States of America? Okay, so you got these other four permanent Security Council members, right? Keep in mind, it's a total of 15, but you got five permanent, then you got 10 non-permanent. They just, they rotate out every two years, okay? So you got a total of 15 states that sit at a round table to talk about the security of planet Earth. But as the Moores start to make their claims at the United Nations, say, "Hey, we are allegedly still dealing with what? We're dealing with what? Threats, breaches, and aggression of the peace in Morocco." And we go to the United Nations, say, "Okay, we need assistance from the Security Council." Obviously, the United States is gonna try to play what? Stupid, right? Like ignorant, they don't know what's happening. Well, one of the things you're gonna find out, Moores, is that the United Nations has 193 member states. It's not always put in the hands of Security Council. You'll, you'll learn more about that. But everybody always, already expects the United States to try to get pushed back. They'll make a biased political decision. But that sounds good, but guess what? There's nothing they can do to do what? They can't maintain threats, breaches, aggression. They can't do it. Why? Because it's outlawed. Why? Because it will be considered what? Acts of terrorism. So therefore, the United Nations has set forth countermeasures, countermeasures to deal with terrorism. There's laws on the book. We'll learn about that. See, Moores already got laws that we can enforce. We have to master the pen, right? Because a pen's gonna put an end to decolonization, not military force. Any military force they try to use, they're breaching international law. All right, we'll talk more about that. Okay, let's continue.
"Article 41, the Security Council may decide what measures not involving the use of armed force are to be employed to give effect to its decisions, and it may call upon the members of the United Nations to apply such measures. These may include complete or partial interruption of economic relations and of rail, sea, air, postal, telegraphic, radio, and other means of communication, and the severance of diplomatic relations."
Okay, so these are some of the reforms we're talking about. What are some of the reforms if a state is still being a belligerent state? Well, first of all, I can understand right here, Security Council's dealing with it. But it also says right here, "And it may call upon the members of the United Nations to apply such measures." So therefore, the other United Nations members can get involved with maintaining security of planet Earth. Keep in mind, this provision is also applicable Keep in mind, this provision is also applicable against too, United States of America. So, the other states of planet Earth can come in and assist Moors in the empire of Morocco. Because the Charter already gives the right for members of the United Nations to get involved. Okay? Just like they're dealing with Russia. Listen, let's go back to it. Right now, all the European states and several other states on planet Earth are now doing what? They're, they're going against Russia, right? The member states, quite a few of them. That's an example. Right? Russia using aggression, right? They're interrupting peace. So, now, international law kicks in. No matter who you are, international law does not recognize you. They, what they rec, what international law recognizes, are you working within the law, or are you an outlaw? That's it. International law does not recognize flags. It recognizes law. And the flags represent those who agree to work within the law, to be law-abiding, to be good neighbors. And when you turn around and breach law, then okay, now the law kicks in against you. And that's what's happening to Russia right now. Okay? Same thing gonna happen to United States of America. Let's just keep it real. If Moors are dealing with the belligerence of the United States of America, it, it's almost a fifty-fifty chance, at the very least, that both Russia and China are gonna be one of the first ones to line up to say, yeah, we ain't down with that, United States of America, you gotta, you gotta stop. Because the Russia and China are making political decisions. What's in it for them? Right? France may come in and say, yes, they might make a political decision. They say, France might think, well, we might get something out of this too. But always remember, Moors, that the United States of America and Great Britain, those are Chinese twins. Chinese twins. So, it's almost like the United States is holding two chairs. The whole world knows this. Nothing new. But it's certainly not fair to say you got one, two, three, four European states. Because the United States considers itself a European state. Go look NATO. NATO is only for what members? European states. Well, how could the United States be a part of NATO if they're not a European state? Oh, it's because they're a European state. Canada's a part of NATO. Oh, Canada's a European state? Yes. And that's by definition, just looking at NATO as a membership, now you look at these four right here, United States of America, Great Britain, right, uh, uh, France, and unfortunately, I have to tie Russia to it because Russia's a European state. You got four European states sitting on the Permanent Security Council. That don't make no sense.
No Africa.
Ain't no Africa, no India. It, it's not representative of the world. This is why it's not gonna stand in the twenty-first century. The world's giving pushback, major pushback. The Secretary General, Antonio Butheres, is giving all kind of pushback to this. He's always saying, this has to change. There must be reforms. And there will be reforms. We're talking about that more in the future. Let's continue. Article forty-two.
Article forty-two, "Should the Security Council consider that measures provided for in Article forty-one would be inadequate or have proved to be inadequate, it may take such action by air, sea, or land forces as may be necessary to maintain or restore international peace and security. Such action may include demonstrations, blockade, or other operations by air, sea, or land forces of members of the United Nations."
Okay, so in chapter seven, now it's talking about the power the Security Council has over the, over the world's military. So, one hundred and ninety-three member states all have to give a percentage of their military, right, volunteer percentage of their military to fight on behalf of the United Nations. Okay, let, let's take, let's, let's take a look at that. Okay, here are some images. Okay, we do a quick, you can put it in Google, "United Nations military," and these images will come up, right? So, these are just some images. That's the United Nations right there. Right? Yeah, it's a melting pot of nationals coming together. Right? So, they're all wearing UN helmets, they're UN colors. There's UN military right there. It's a melting pot of nations coming together to create one big military. Okay? One big military. They're all different nations coming together. Right? They got tanks, everything, because all the, the states, member states, bring all their military arms to one big conglomerate military, right? It's just a, it's just a combination. Okay, we're just going through a few of these pictures, okay? UN, the blue always lets you know, right? UN. UN. Okay? UN. So, as you see, it's just one big military, Moors. Alright? Look at these lovely ladies. That's UN, okay? A melting pot. Okay. Okay. Article forty-three.
Article forty-three, one, "All members of the United Nations, in order to contribute to the maintenance of international peace and security, undertake to make available to the Security Council on its call and in accordance with a special agreement or agreements, armed forces, assistance, and facilities, including rites of passage necessary for the purpose of maintaining international peace and security."
All, okay, so Article forty-three says, section one, "All members of the United Nations, in order to contribute to the maintenance of international peace and security, undertake to make available to the Security Council on its call and in accordance with a special agreement or agreements, armed forces, assistance, and facilities, including rites of passage necessary for the purpose of maintaining international peace and security." Right? So, that we all have to give some percentage of our militaries to help the United Nations, right? That's what we all must understand. The United Nations is a, is a conglomerate, a melting pot of nations coming together to create the biggest military on planet Earth. Okay? Section two.
Two, "Such agreement or agreements shall govern the numbers and types of forces, their degree of readiness and general location, and the nature of the facilities and assistance to be provided." Three, "The agreement or agreements shall be negotiated as soon as possible on the initiative of the Security Council. They shall be concluded between the Security Council and members, or between the Security Council and groups of members, and shall be subject to ratification by the signatory states in accordance with their respective constitutional process."
Okay, forty-four.
Article forty-four, "When the Security Council has decided to use force, it shall, before calling upon a member not represented on it, to provide armed forces and fulfillment of the obligations, assume under Article forty-three, invite that member, if the member so desires, to participate in the decisions of the Security Council concerning the employment of contingents of that member's armed forces."
Alright, so Article forty-three is mainly about, let me just read it again so the Moors can understand. Article, excuse me, Article forty-four, "When the Security Council has decided to use force, it shall, before calling upon a member, not represented on it, to provide armed forces and fulfillment of the obligations, assume under Article forty-three, invite that member, if the member so desires, to participate in decisions of Security Council concerning employment of contingents of the member's armed forces." So, what does that mean? The United Nations had put a provision in the Charter that says, it's not mandatory for your military to get involved with the United Nations. If, in fact, the United, the Security Council decides to put the militaries together, your nation can say, you know what? We, we're gonna abstain. We're gonna stay out of it. So, it gives the United Nations, uh, member, member states a right to say, no, we don't wanna send our military. Okay? So, it's a little bit of politics there. Obviously, if you don't send nobody to help, if you don't help them, when they call upon you, well, what's gonna happen when you need help one day? You know what they're gonna do? They're gonna blackball you. Right? So, it's a little bit of politics here, right? So, it's one of those damn if you do, damn if you don't type of policies, right? Okay, that's what you gotta take away from that, that Moors do not have to assist the United Nations. But if we ever need assistance, what do you think they're gonna say? Chances are, they might say no, because we said no to them, right? So, we'll, we'll talk about all that another day. Alright, we'll get to the politics of that some other time. Okay, Article forty-five.
Article forty-five, "In order to enable the United Nations to take urgent military measures, members shall hold immediately available National Air Force contingents for combined international enforcement action. The strength and degree of readiness of these contingents and plans for their combined action shall be determined within the limits laid down in the special agreement or agreements referred to in Article forty-three by the Security Council with the assistance of the Military Staff Committee." Article forty-six, "Plans for the application of armed force shall be made by the Security Council with the assistance of the Military Staff Committee." Article forty-seven, one, "There shall be established a Military Staff Committee to advise and assist the Security Council on all questions relating to the Security Council's military requirements for their maintenance and international, of international peace and security, the employment and command of forces placed at its disposal, the regulation of armaments, and possible disarmament." Two, "The Military Staff Committee shall consist of the chiefs of staff of the permanent members of the Security Council or their representatives. Any member of the United Nations not permanently represented on the committee shall be invited by the committee to be associated with it when the efficient discharge of the committee's responsibilities requires the participation of that member in its work." Three, "The Military Staff Committee shall be responsible under the Security Council for the strategic direction of any armed forces placed at the disposal of the Security Council. Questions relating to the command of such forces shall be worked out subsequently." Four, "The Military Staff Committee, with the authorization of the Security Council, and after consultation with appropriate regional agencies, may establish regional subcommittees." Article forty-eight, one, "The action required to carry out the decisions of the Security Council for the maintenance of international peace and security shall be taken by all the members of the United Nations, or by some of them, as the Security Council may determine." Two, "Such decisions shall be carried out by the members of the United Nations directly and through their action in the appropriate international agencies of which they are members." Article forty-nine, "The members of the United Nations shall join in affording mutual assistance in carrying out the measures decided upon by the Security Council." Article fifty, "If preventative or enforcement measures against any state are taken by the Security Council, any other state, whether a member of the United Nations or not, which finds itself confronted with economic, with special economic problems arising from the carrying out of those measures, shall have the right to consult the Security Council with regard to a solution of those problems." Article fifty-one, "Nothing in the present Charter shall impair the inherent right of individual or collective self-defense in an armed attack, if an armed attack occurs against a member of the United Nations, against a member of the United Nations until the Security Council has taken the measures necessary to maintain international peace and security. Measures taken by members in the exercise of this right of self-defense shall be immediately reported to the Security Council and shall not in any way affect the authority and responsibility of the Security Council under the present Charter to take at any time such action as it deems necessary in order to maintain or restore international peace and security."
Alright. Okay, Moors, so, as you can see, we just kinda read, uh, straight through it, right? Articles thirty-nine through fifty-one. But why do we just kinda read straight through it? It's because Moors have to understand, do not focus in on military tactics. We have to master the pen first. Any bully can use arms. Any bully. But when you understand how to master politics, how to get into negotiating what's best for your state versus another state, that's what Moors have to understand. That's what Moors have to learn. We have to become proficient at foreign policy. Foreign policy is, can you sit down with someone that you don't agree with and come to an agreement? The world is watching the Moors right now. They said, are these Moors gonna be patient enough and have the discipline to learn how to use a pen? Or they just simply gonna keep picking up arms? You see, Moors, when you pick up arms, what you're saying to yourself is, you can't win. You're getting frustrated. You think arms is gonna solve your problem. No, it just makes your problem worse. The Moors have to show a sign of intellect. And don't get me wrong, there, there's a time where you have to defend yourself. We'll talk about that. It's called self-defense. Right? That's Article fifty-one. We're gonna go into Article fifty-one a little bit more, but Articles thirty-nine through fifty-one is about step-by-step reforms. You bring your problems to the UN. You see, Moors have an obligation as well not to do what? Listen, Moors, here's what we can't do. Chapter seven, Articles thirty-one through fifty-nine, actions with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression. We can't do that either. We can't be the ones that's the aggressors. We can't breach peace. We can't threaten people. So, okay, if that's the case, what do we have to do? We have to use our intellect. You have to try to settle disputes peacefully. Moors cannot take shortcuts and just start picking up arms. You'll lose every time, because you're threatening the peace of the world. That makes you no better than the person you're disputing with. All, all wars are started because of a pen. People can't get along. And then the war starts, and guess how all wars end? With a pen. It, it, it starts off with a bunch of noise, and then it ends with silence. And what actually created the silence? A pen, a treaty. Two disputing parties finally sit down and sign off on a treaty. So, Moors have to master our own treaties. So, I went through Articles thirty-nine through fifty-one, because it's no use in talking about military arms. That does not mean that we should not, that we should be in the absence of military arms. It just means that we have to master intellect first. What is international law all about? You don't have to teach Moors how to fight. We, we come out the womb knowing how to throw a jab. So, fighting is a, look, let me explain something to the Moors. Why do you think we as a people? Why do you think that we dominate everything that's a physical sport? We dominate, we jump the highest, we run the fastest, we leap the furthest? We're the most naturally gifted athletes on planet Earth. But do you think your skill, your DNA was meant for athletic program? No. You were given that DNA to be, to be the best fighting people on planet Earth. You can run faster than your enemy. You can jump higher. You can run faster than your enemy, you can jump higher than your enemy, you're stronger than your enemy. You're more flexible than your enemy, you have the dominant DNA. It wasn't for sports. It was to maintain. Military power over another hand to hand battle of another state. We keep thinking a guy is five foot three, like Spud Webb, Spud Webb playing NBA basketball, right, what was he, five two, five three? Dunking basketballs. It's all kind of five foot two, five foot three, the guys can dunk basketball, how is somebody so short can dunk a basketball? Because it wasn't about athletics. It's because our athletic ability was really for us to be the best fighting force on planet Earth. No one can defeat us. So since we're naturally born with that, what do that we actually have to work on? Our intellect with a pen. Once we master our intellect. Then they already know we're gifted and talented in the athletic department to defeat them militarily. The Europeans have never won a war without a law, they can't win without us. Go back and look at history, Moors are the militia for everybody. Everybody. So stop talking about military arms. You was born with a military arm, your body's a military arm. But you was also armed with a brain. Let's develop that, cuz you were natural at that too. But you overcompensate because you're athletically gifted. And since you recognize your athletic gift gives you a little bit of heads up on someone else, you start focusing on that as if. That's your strength, and it's not. It's your brain. The Europeans recognized they had the recessive DNA, so what did they do? They doubled down on what? Intellect. So once we doubled down on intellect, cuz we're already born with athletic ability, cuz we have the, we have the dominant DNA. Then we can never be defeated, because now we know how to maintain the peace, cuz we already know that we can deal with the physical aspect of it, that's easy. We just double up on them. I'll just jab, jab, overhand, right, all day. That's easy. Moors don't wanna do what, what's called hard. Moors wanna avoid the intellect battle. They don't wanna apply themselves and study. So now they wanna use, use a force themselves, because they're frustrated, they wanna take a shortcut and thinking that's gonna solve it. Did it solve it for the Black Panthers? No. The most recent big group that popped up, what was their name, uh, the Not F'ing Around Crew, right, with all their military arms? I think it was, uh, uh, Grand Master J, right? Where is he at now? In federal penitentiary. What'd he get? Seven years, something like that, uh huh. The arms didn't work, did he? Now, it doesn't mean that, that Not F'ing Around organization wasn't correct, it just meant it's out of sequential order. They didn't wanna apply themselves to the intellect. You being out of the gun range is not gonna help you decolonize. It's intellect. You got fifty five states in Africa, you know what they eventually learned? About the pen, they got into foreign policies, they got into politics, they used the Charter to their advantage. Moors gotta do the same thing. Moors are highly intelligent beings, highly intelligent. But we keep resorting back to the physical aspect because that comes natural, that's easy. But it's difficult to use your brain cells. But guess what? We ain't got no choice, cuz the rest of the world doesn't. We gotta do it too. But that does not mean that we should negate the fact that we need a military, cuz all states have what? A military, let's talk about it. Okay? Now, we wanna talk about it in the context of terrorism. If the United States is doing something that's aggressive, if it's a use of force against us, then we have a right to what's called self-defense. But that's why it's called self-defense, not self-offense. It's to defend yourself, the first defense is with your pen, when a pen does not prevail, sometimes you might have to defend yourself physically. But we already good at that. Okay, let's talk, okay, Article fifty one.
Article fifty one. Nothing in the present Charter shall impair the inherent right of individual. Or collective self-defense and an armed attack, if an armed attack occurs against a. Member.
Okay, let's pause right there. All right, so don't get caught up in the word member, the, the Charter is designed for members and non-member states. Any once a state got a right to utilize provisions of the Charter, okay? Okay, Article fifty one, nothing in the present Charter shall impair the inherent right. Of individual or collective self-defense if an armed attack occurs, okay? So what's an individual right? That's an individual state. What's a collective right? That's a, that's a group of states. Right, that's the WRC, the WRC, okay, the, the WRC is a, is a group of states, right? The WRC is a group of states. Right, or, or it could just simply be one state, right, going back to Ampax Constitution, one state, okay? So the word individual, it has nothing to do with one individual citizen or national. It has something to do with states, states are persons in international law. Okay, let's, let's start from the beginning. Nothing in the present Charter shall impair the inherent right of a individual state. Or collective states to self-defense. If an armed attack occurs against a member state or non-member state. This is where your ergo amis parties come in in the class action lawsuit. This is NATO, right, the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, NATO, the European states created a military organization. That way they can have each other's back. You attack one NATO state, you attack them all. That's called a collective. Collective self-defense, right? Okay, now here's what else we have to learn, when you're being attacked as Moors. The United Nations has put together what's called. The Office of Counterterrorism. Cuz anything the United States is doing to Moors during their varying stages of advancement of statehood. Is not always considered a terrorist act. But if in fact it's an act of what? Threats, breaches, or aggression, Moors can define it as what? A terrorist act. The United States has an entire history in their books and literature claiming that they, there was a lot of terrorist acts against who? Negroes, blacks, colors, all the way up to this very day of, of the year twenty twenty three, terrorist acts. They all know that KKK was a terrorist organization. Right? So if they're trying to do something to supervise the impossibility performance of our Moroccan states. While we're at varying stages of advancement. Some, if not all of their acts are basically acts of aggression and use of force. Right, okay, let's go back to the Charter. Okay, so Article fifty one, okay, let's pick it up right here, I'll read. Measures taken by members in the exercise of this right of self-defense. Shall be immediately reported to the Security Council. And shall not in any way affect the authority and responsibility of the Security Council. Under the present Charter to take any. Time such as action as it deems necessary. In order to maintain or restore international peace and security, so when you're dealing with use of force. The security, we gotta notify the Security Council. Say, hey, we're dealing with who? Okay, let's go to it. That's the Security Council, that's but five out of the fifteen, all fifteen get notified, that's our obligation as Moors. So if the United States does an act of aggression against us. And let's say we have to pick up arms and deal with that scenario. Where our state is obligated to notify the UN so that automatically triggers them to start going through their reforms. To come in and maintain the peace. Now, keep in mind, the United States sits on that same board. But they gotta deal with all the other Security Council members as well if they're doing some act of aggression. But in the meantime, the Moors can defend themselves, going back to the Charter. Right here on the Article fifty one, it tells you immediately that we have a right to defend ourselves immediately. Right? Article fifty one, nothing in the present Charter shall impair. The inherent right of an individual state or a collective state to self-defense. If an armed attack occurs, meaning you can immediately retaliate, you don't have to get permission. Okay? But if you got opportunity now to get into some type of discussions, negotiations. Then that's what you should do in order to maintain peace, but if someone's attacking you, we gotta fight back as a state. As a state, not just individual Moors. But as a state on state dispute. And we have a right to do that. Okay? What else gives us the right to fight back? Okay. Now you go over to the WRC. Convention. Right, this is WRC Convention, this is a convention in the Empire Morocco, the Wazir Regional Council, which is the WRC, right? The WRC is a convention, it's an intergovernmental. Organization that works on behalf of all the member states, right? But all the member states come together to collect, your head of state sits at this round table. The, the, the Wazirs sit at a round table, all the heads of states. The Wazirs and heads of states sit at a round table to represent their state. But this convention also talks about military powers. It talks about self-defense. Okay, so if I put in the word, I go Ctrl F, and I put in the word self-defense. The first place the word self-defense shows up. Is Article twenty seven. No.
Article, uh, voting, Article twenty seven, one, before the Security Council of Defense can activate. Any military or police engagement against a domestic Moroccan state, foreign state, or foreign international organization. The Wazir Regional Council shall call upon each member state to cast one vote before any act of self-defense is agreed upon. Two, decisions of the Security Council of Defense. On procedural matters shall be confirmed by an affirmative vote of the Wazirs, of the Wazir Regional Council. Three, decisions of the Security Council of Defense on all other matters shall be made by an affirmative majority vote. Of member states in present or by hybrid visual voting, provided that. In decisions under chapter six and under paragraph three of Article fifty two. A party to a dispute shall abstain from voting.
All right, so this is, this particular Article twenty seven and the convention itself. Article twenty seven talks about self-defense, well, what the WRC heads of states have agreed to say, listen. Before we go to war, let's vote on it. Okay, if we have time to actually talk about foreign policy, what just took place. Let, let's figure out, let's get a discussion before we have a knee jerk response. Let's actually vote on it so we know we're intentionally going to war. All right, intentionally, we're dealing with self-defense, all right, this way the, the Wazirs have an opportunity to think it through with their intellect. However, there is provision to talk about immediate self-defense, okay, let's continue. Now I click the down bar, uh, arrow, right, cuz it tells me, in this document, the word self-defense is listed four times, okay, that's number one. Okay, let's go on down to the next area. Now it takes us to Article fifty one, okay? No.
Article fifty one, nothing in the present convention shall impair the inherent right of individual or collective immediate. Self-defense if an armed attack occurs against a member state or the convention. Of the convention or the United States of Morocco Treaty Organization. Measures taken by any member in the exercise of this right of immediate defense. Shall be immediately reported to the Wazir Regional Council and the Security Council of Defense and shall not. In any way affect the authority and responsibility of the Wazir Regional Council. Or the Security Council of Defense in harmony with the United States of Morocco Treaty Organization. Under the present convention to take at any time such action as it deems necessary in order to maintain. Or restore regional and international peace and security. The United Nations Charter provisions on self-defense shall be observed in the exercise of countermeasures.
Okay, so what is Article fifty one say? Well, you would say, first of all, I say, well, Article fifty one. Sound like it's a contradiction to Article twenty seven. But you gotta understand, Article twenty seven talks about voting, right, so it says. Article twenty seven, before the Security Council of Defense, right, cuz the Moors will have a Security Council defense of our own, we have our own military. Before the Security Council of Defense can activate any military police engagements against a domestic Moroccan state. Or foreign state or foreign international organization. The Wazir Regional Council shall call upon each member state to cast one vote before any act of self-defense. Is agreed upon. Okay, but that contradicts. Uh, Article fifty one. Cuz Article fifty one says, nothing in the present convention shall impair the inherent right. Of individual or collective immediate self-defense. If an armed attack occurs against a member state of the convention. Or the United States of Morocco Treaty Organization, well, what does that mean? See, sometimes our Moroccan states might get attacked immediately. And you have to defend yourself, there's no time to go back and get a vote before you can throw a punch. If you get punched, you gotta punch back. So the convention gives Moroccan states the right to defend themselves. As an interdependent state. However, what the Moors states will have to do through the WRC is start to define what are specific acts of aggression. Right, so these articles are what you call implied tasks, but we will have to come over resolutions. And foreign policy to understand, okay, what is, what do we consider an act of aggression? Because we, a lot of people have different various degrees of what they think aggression is. I know some people saying, man, you, you step on my sneaks. That's an act of aggression, right, something as stupid as that.
Right.
So we as Moors gotta define what is aggression. So when we define it, we will have several variations of what aggression is. Okay? If, if one of those, those definitions of aggression says, well, if they do X. That gives you a right under Article fifty one to have immediate self-defense. If, if it's applicable to the definition of aggression. If it fits, right, if the fit, if the shoe fits where it, you can immediately act, however. If an act of aggression happens, that's not a, that does not give you the right as a Moroccan state to just. Go to fisticuffs. And you just can't start swinging on someone, you can't just start using your state to start bringing military force against. Some type of misunderstanding. So the WRC, okay, let's go back to the top. The WRC member states who sit at this round table are gonna help us to maintain peace. And security, and all the heads of states sitting here are gonna try to use their intellect and get into foreign policy. With the Americans while we're at varying stages of advancement, that way we don't have no misunderstandings. So we define the word aggression. It'll have several definitions, right, it'll, it'll escalate up. It'll have several definitions, right? It'll, it'll escalate up. But one of those definitions might say, yeah, if they do X, then you can do Y.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying? Alright. Just a moment. Okay. So that was the, that was the convention, right? It gives us a right on Articles twenty-seven and fifty-one to utilize self-defense. That's a right that we've given ourselves as Moors. We'll build our military. So you got organizations such as what? The not effing around organization. Guess what they need to do? They need to follow the prescriptions of international law that says, first of all, the Treaty Madrid of eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, Paragraph one says, "All those Moors who call themselves black, they gotta return to Morocco and pledge their allegiance back to a Moroccan state." That's first of all. Then they have to do what? Renounce any naturalized citizenship of the United States. Then once they become a national of a Moroccan, Moroccan state, then if they like to play with toys of, of, of armed weapons, they can become part of the police and military of a Moroccan state, cause they like to go down to the gun range all the time. Now they have a legal right and an international right that will be issued the proper permits and permission to care around those weapons while they protect our state. And they will not be able to be touched and infringed against. J. Edgar Hoover can't touch them. The FBI will be able to touch them. The U.S. District Court can't indict them. They can come and be all they can be within the protections of a Moroccan state. That's what they need to understand. I know they wanna maintain homeland security, but right now, they have nothing but an illegal militia group. And you're trying to overthrow the United States while you're still an American citizen. That's their problem. They don't understand. They gotta stop calling themselves Americans, stop trying to use civil rights, stop talking about the United States and their Amendment number two and gun rights. You ain't got nothing to do with their constitution. You need to return to your Moroccan constitution and hold those weapons and protect the Moroccan state. That's what needs to happen. So that's my proclamation. And my request to all the Moors out there who call themselves black, who carry around these weapons, you need to come home, protect the homeland the right way. Listen. Okay. When he's talking about the offers of counterterrorism, United Nations already set forth certain reforms, right? They're talking reforms, which is step-by-step process. United, the, the United Nations already identified certain things on their list. Okay, so, so let's read this first paragraph.
International legal instruments. Since nineteen sixty-three, the international community has elaborated nineteen international legal instruments to prevent terrorist attacks. Those instruments were developed under the auspices of the United Nations and the International Atomic Energy Agency, the IAEA, and are open to participation by all member states. Here is a summary of the nineteen universal legal instruments and additional amendments dealing with terrorism. For the full, for the full text of the documents, click on the title.
Okay, so now they're mentioning nineteen different reforms, right? Nineteen different reforms. Right, we won't, we won't go through them all, but we're gonna go down to one that's a little bit more germane to what, what we're talking about right now, okay? So now we're gonna come down to how do you protect your nationals? How do you protect your diplomats, right? What if the United States locks up a Moroccan diplomat? Of a Moroccan state? What if they lock up your head of state? What if they lock up your Minister of Foreign Affairs? What if they lock up your Consul General? What if they lock up your Chief Judge? What if they lock up your Saar Rahal, the Speaker of the Legislative House? Right, what if they lock up any of your legislators? What if they lock up your sheriff? Anyone who's protected as an official of the state? Well, how do we do that? How do we protect them? Well, international law has already set forth reforms. They started doing it in the sixties. But let's look at one that came out in the seventies. Okay, well, hold up. Uh, what's the name of this title?
Nineteen seventy-three Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons.
And what about this title?
Instrument Regarding the Protection of International Staff.
International staff. The, not your domestic, local, not effing around militia group. I'm talking to all the Moors out there who think they're black. I'm talking to Moors Americas who keep carrying around weapons as well. Are you the staff listed under international protection? Yes or no? Well, the answer is no. But international law is protecting anyone who's of proper authority of their state on an international level. So if another belligerent state does something to one of your officials, you have a right to enforce international law. Okay, so now we click on this, right? So first of all, let's read these, these couple of paragraphs.
Uh, first bullet point defines an internationally protected person as a head of state, Minister of Foreign Affairs, representative or official of a state or international organization who is entitled to special protection in a foreign state and his, her family. And, second bullet, requires parties to criminalize and make punishable by appropriate penalties which take into account their grave nature. The intentional murder, kidnapping, or other attack upon the person or liberty of an internationally protected person, a violent attack upon the official premises, the private accommodations, or the means of transport of such person, a threat or attempt to commit such an attack, and an act constituting participation as an accomplice.
Oh. Now, this came out nineteen seventy-three. Why don't the Moors know about this? Why don't the black people know about this? Why aren't the ministers of these mosques telling the black people about this? Why doesn't the NAAC keep telling the black people about this? Why aren't the Moors American teachers telling the Moors about this, since the Moors keep carrying around weapons? Why are we talking about this? Listen. Alright, now we click on it, right? You click on the, the link. Okay, the United Nations has put together a resolution regarding what? This, this is terrorism. Right? You're being terrorized. Where there's acts of aggression, but there's different levels to aggression. So they're gonna break down a little bit of it, okay? Alright, so this came out nineteen seventy-three, okay? That the Moors don't know nothing about. Okay, from the top.
Multilateral. Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, including diplomatic agents, with Resolution thirty-one sixty-six of the General Assembly of the United Nations, adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations at New York on the fourteenth of December of nineteen seventy-three.
Alright, pause. So wait a minute before we get started. What's the title again? Well, first of all, it's a multilateral agreement amongst who? States. Only states can be a party to this. It's, it's state rights. The state's protecting you. Your state is extending to the officers of the state certain protections, right? Privileges and immunities. So if another foreign state breaches that, now you invoke what? International law. You don't talk about their dang young constitution. You talk about international law. But listen. Multilateral Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, including diplomatic agents. Right? So let me pause right there. So this, so far what we're reading, this is now giving states the right to punish another state for breaching the rights of their protected nationals or officers of the state. Let me give you an example. Good Brother Lamont Eel, right? Who runs around saying he's the Consul General of Morocco. Well, how is the United States could snatch up Lamont Eel on camera? With him screaming out, "I'm the Consul General." Consul General is a protected officer of the state with privileges and immunities. And the United States was so bold, they said, "We already know he gonna film it because he films everything." The United States turn around and let the sheriffs about eighteen deep jump on him. And then the Moors turn around and put that video on YouTube to let the whole world see the so-called Consul General get assaulted. Do you know that would be a breach of international law? It would be a crime, right? It says, it's a crime and a punishment to do anything against a protected diplomat or official of a state. So therefore, if Good Brother Lamont Eel, because that's our good brother, he's a warrior, he's just been miseducated, he's been indoctrinated by his Moors American teacher who ain't telling the truth. His Moors American teacher ain't told him, "Brother, you can't be the Consul General of Morocco. You're a de facto." You're not de jour. Your state is Good Brother Lamont Eel. There's no state that recognizes the name Lamont Eel nowhere on planet Earth. So you cannot claim to be the Consul General that's patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious if you haven't taken your oath to a state, first of all. Then the state turns around, recognizes you, and then makes you the Consul General of the state. So therefore, Good Brother Lamont Eel, you gotta get back into statehood, my brother, then be the Consul General of your state so that way you can enjoy privilege and immunities, cause right now, they got you locked up as a Moors subject, i.e. a citizen of the United States of America. You're not the Consul General of Morocco. That's a proven fact over and over again. And I say that with love, cause we're talking truth. This is AIPAC Study Session. This is an educational platform. We gotta talk about these truths of what we've done wrong so we can correct it. But, the Moroccan states, okay? Let's talk. These, these six Moroccan states have privileges and immunities because their constitution been ratified upon the promulgating. They've all returned to the Empire Morocco through their Moroccan state. They're taking their oath to the constitution, they're taking an oath to their office, and then the state has now extended privileges and immunities to each of the officers that represent these states. Okay, so now these states, and especially the WRC, who also enjoys privileges and immunities, can now invoke what? Okay. Resolutions such as Resolution thirty-one sixty-six. Okay? Alright. So let's read the title one more time, we'll continue to read.
Multilateral. A Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against International Internationally Protected Persons, including diplomats, with Resolution thirty-one sixty-six of the General Assembly of the United Nations, adopted by the General Assembly of the United Nations at New York on the fourteenth of December of nineteen seventy-three.
Yep, so, so New York is right here in the Empire Morocco, and Moors don't even go there and knock on the door, ring the doorbell. We act like it don't even exist. Shameful. Okay, just a moment. Alright.
Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of Crimes Against Internationally Protected Persons, including diplomatic agents. The states parties to the, to this convention having in mind the purposes and principles of the Charter of the United Nations concerning the maintenance of international peace and the promotion of friendly relations and cooperating among states, considering that crimes against diplomatic agents and other internationally protected persons jeopardizing the safety of these persons create a serious threat to the maintenance of normal international relations which are necessary for cooperation among states. Believing that the commission of such crimes is a matter of grave concern to the international community.
Pause, so detaining the competent authority, i.e. the recognized officials of a state. Any foreign state detaining the diplomats or officials of your state is a crime. See it right here, it says right here, it says it's a crime, it says considering that crimes against diplomatic agents. Considering that crimes against diplomatic agents. Who's a diplomatic agent? Consul Generals. Okay. Is that Consul General recognized by a Moroccan state? Yes or no? That's the question. Well, who can answer that question? Only the Moroccan state. That gave that Consul General the authority in the first place. Where is the head of state? Where is the Minister of Foreign Affairs? That now lets the foreign state know, "You have our Consul General detained." Your state comes to represent you. Your state sends all the documentation. This is what Moors gotta understand. So Moors run around with all these self-appointed titles. And I get it, we've been trying to fix this thing, but we've been clumsy and incompetent in rolling this out. We did not understand government, and Noble Drali told us between nineteen thirteen and nineteen twenty-nine to study the Europeans. Did we do it? No. We just started going into the cereal box and pulling out a plastic bag and sticking it on ourselves. Tell me what other civilized people on planet Earth appoint themselves the Consul General? Who, who on planet Earth appoints themselves the sheriff or the police? They just stick the badge on themselves. Nobody does that, except for colonized Moors who keep wanna take shortcuts instead of using their intellect to study international law. Gotta understand as Moors, we have delayed our own justice. And now, Moors have been detained and locked up, and their lives have been turned upside down because their Moors American teachers have lied to them. And that's the truth. We're reading the self-evidence of the truth. That international law protects the real competent authority of a state. Not the competent authority of stateless people, those are organizations. Good Brother Lamont Eel, I love you. But you've been lied to by your Moors American teachers. And Good Brother, when you finally get out, I hope, I hope the Moors in your jurisdiction can help you. But whenever you get out, you gotta return to Morocco, pledge your allegiance to a Moroccan state with the hopes that they appoint you as the Consul General. That's a privileged title. Right? That, that comes with a lot of power and responsibility, and you have to be the competent authority. And right now, sir, I hate to tell you, you're the incompetent authority. Cause you don't understand international law. We're reading international law, Good Brother. So when you finally get out, please go and watch AIPAC Study Session. One through whatever, alright? We here to help you, Good Brother. Okay. So considering that crimes against diplomatic agents and other international protected persons jeopardizing the safety of these persons create a serious threat to the maintenance of normal international relations which are necessary for cooperation among states. But wait a minute, who are other protected persons? The protected persons? Well, that's anyone your state says is protected. If the state says that person, regardless of their name, is protected, then that person is protected by the state. So the Moors are trying to run away from what they call the straw man, and it's not a straw man. It's a Moors subject name, that you should be trying to make a former Moors subject according to the Treaty Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, Section A, right? Paragraph one says what? "Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country has to return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the Empire and pledge your allegiance, consent back to Moroccan state." So your former Moors subject name as an example would be Kendrick Johnson. Kendrick Johnson has to return back to Morocco. Kendrick Johnson does. Because the United States has Kendrick Johnson on their registration, not Kendrick Bay. They don't know who the heck Kendrick Bay is. They're like, "We know Kendrick Johnson is." So guess who has to return to Morocco? Kendrick Johnson. Then Kendrick Johnson can change its name to what? Kendrick Bay. Kendrick Johnson and Kendrick Bay are two separate legal personalities. So the protected person would be who? Kendrick Johnson, once Kendrick Johnson returns to Morocco, you put the Kendrick Johnson name under the umbrella of the state to be a protected person. But who else is protected? Kendrick Bay as the diplomat officer national of the state. So both legal personalities, both names are protected under Moroccan law. If the state says that name is protected, then that dang old name is protected. That is the person. Both legal personalities. That's what Moors gotta understand. Stop running away from a straw man. You need the straw man in order to get back into Morocco. But it's not a straw man, it's the Moorish subject. The Moorish subject is Dorothy. You can't leave Dorothy in Oz and just change her name. "Oh, I ain't Dorothy no more. I'm Dorito." You left Dorothy over here. Dorothy is your name they got on the registration. You gotta get Dorothy out of the jurisdiction and back into Moroccan jurisdiction. But Moors been taught to leave Dorothy in Oz. And guess what happens if Dorothy's name is still on the jurisdiction of Oz? Oz gonna continue to do what? Indict Dorothy. But if Dorothy no longer in jurisdiction of Oz, because Dorothy came back, and then Dorothy wanted to change her name to Dorothy Bay, because over here in Oz, she's Dorothy Johnson. Well, Dorothy Johnson gotta return back to Morocco and then change her name to Dorothy Bay. So now both Dorothy Johnson and Dorothy Bay over here protecting in Morocco both of these names. But the Moors have been running away from the name. "No, man, see, you can't be associated with that name." That's a lie. You're breaching the treaty. The treaty said the Moorish subject gotta return. Who the United States have listed on their registration as the Moorish subject? It's Dorothy Johnson, not Dorothy Bay. So stop leaving the Moorish subject in their jurisdiction. You gotta bring the Moorish subject into Morocco. So it's a protected person, protected persons, okay? Anybody who's on the protected persons list is just simply protected. Okay, let's, let's come on down. Alright, so what do we have here? The small print. Let's read this small print.
Date of deposit of the instrument of ratification or accession.
Okay, so that small print about, okay, these states became a party to that resolution. They said, "We agree to say, yes, our diplomats are protected. But we also agree to say, if we infringe against your diplomats' rights, we've agreed to be punished because we know it's a crime." Right? In other words, by signing onto this resolution, you're agreeing that you know it's a crime. And you're saying the other states know it's a crime. So let's get into friendly relations, and diplomats, you cannot touch them. They have privileges and immunities. Immunity means you're immune. So who, who else signed off on this? Okay. So the United States of America. The United States of America signed this. What does that mean? They acknowledge the fact that they touched someone's diplomat, that it's a crime, they shall be what? Punished. You see? They'll be punished. They put their names on contract. So when they start locking up Moroccan diplomats in the empire Morocco, and that Moroccan diplomat name is on the protected persons list, and guess what? The United States of America, right? As the state name that's represented by the United States International Organization or Intergovernmental Organization, they have fifty territories with governors. So the United States of America, the United States and the governors, and the governors, all their municipalities, which are called counties, they're all obligated because the United States of America signed this contract, so now the governor's obligated. The magistrates are obligated. The prosecutors are obligated. If they do anything to arrest, detain, or infringe against the rights of a diplomat or any protected person, it's a crime, it's punished according to what? International law. Not according to their dang old constitution. It's international law. That's where you start. All states put down their constitution, they pick up international law, they're all bound to international law. Okay? This is important for Moors to understand. As Moors start to get into statehood, what protects us as diplomats? Well, this, this been out since seventeen, uh, excuse me, this been out since nineteen seventy-three. Right? So what's the math on that? Uh, about fifty years? Why didn't Moors know about this? It's fifty years old. Why didn't we know? You think Lamont Eel knows about this? No. You think his Moorish American teacher told him about this? No. Know how I know? Because Lamont Eel is stateless. If Lamont Eel was taught correctly, he would have found out going for him to be consul general. He had to first return to Morocco and pledge allegiance to a state. Which meant his Moorish American teacher would have had to tell him about statehood. His Moorish American teacher would have told him to stop trying to enforce the constitution and enforce international law because the title consul general deals with nothing but international law. Consul generals don't deal with domestic law. They deal with international law exclusively. Did his Moorish American teacher tell Lamont Eel that? No. Let's continue.
Subsequently, the convention came into force in respect of the state listed hereafter on the thirteenth day following the date of deposit of its instrument of ratification with the Secretary General of the United Nations in accordance with Article seventeen, um, paragraph two.
Alright. Alright, let's get into it.
Convinced that there is an urgent need to adopt appropriate and effective measures for the prevention and punishment of such crimes, have agreed as follows. Article one, the purposes of this convention. One, internationally protected persons means, A, a head of state, including any member of a collegial body performing the functions of a head of state under the constitution of the state concerned, a head of government, or a minister of foreign affairs, whenever any such person is in a foreign state, as well as members of his family who accompany him. B, any representative or official of a state or any official or other agent of an international organization of an intergovernmental character who, at the time, when, and in the place where a crime against him, his official premises, his private accommodation, or his means of transport is committed, is entitled pursuant to international law to special protection from any attack on his person, freedom, or dignity, as well as members of his family forming part of his household.
Alright, so what's protecting officers of your state? Well, it's international law. I'm gonna keep saying this over and over again. Like, how do Moors get access to international law? How is that Moors can invoke international law? Well, first, they have to have a state constitution, right? So your constitution establishes state. There's no state without a constitution. So the constitution acts as a portal to get access to international law. Good brother Lamont Eel don't have access to international law. And this is why eighteen sheriffs could power up on him and get away with it. They did not commit a crime. This is what I'm trying to say. And I know a lot of Moors don't wanna hear that, but I can prove it every day of the week. And our good brother Lamont Eel, he's a warrior, right? He's not a soldier. He's a warrior. But his talents have been wasted. His, his heart of a, of a lion talents have been wasted because he thinks he's a Moorish American consul general. There's no such thing Moorish Americans. And he can't be self-appointed. It doesn't work like that. So right now, the United Nations is coming up with definitions, right? They say, okay, what's the definition of an internationally protected person? So they noticed, they put together a definition. The Moors have to put together definitions. Of Moroccan legislation says, okay, what's a protected person? Right? Such as your former Moorish subject. How do you put together a definition of the Moroccan law that protects your former Moorish subject? How do you protect Kendrick Johnson and Kendrick Bay? How do you protect them both, you see? As well as who? Their family members. You see how international law extends to your family members? It's already a writing. If you're the proper authority of your state. Okay, section two.
Two, alleged offender means a person asked to whom there is sufficient evidence to determine prima facie that he has committed a, or participated in one or more of the crimes set forth in Article two. Article two, one, intentional commission of, A, a murder, kidnapping, or other attack upon the person or liberty of an internationally protected person. B, a violent attack on the official premises, the private accommodations, or the means of transport of an internationally protected person likely to endanger his liberty, his person or liberty. C, a threat to commit any such attack. D, an attempt to commit any such attack. And E, an act constituting participation as an accomplice in any such attack shall be made by each state party a crime under its international law.
Uh, its internal law.
Its internal law.
Uh-huh, okay. So wait a minute. So it's only a crime under what? And it's only a crime under internal law. Let me, let me increase that. It's only a crime under its internal law and international law. So you take an international law reform, and you now make it a part of your internal law. But wait. How can you have internal law if you don't have a what? State. See that? Now, I'm talking directly to Lamont Eel's crew. Lamont Eel and your crew, tell me the name of your Moroccan state. Where is the constitution of your Moroccan state that's been ratified, deposited, and promulgated in accordance to international law? Where is the public inauguration where all the heads of state, of your state, good brother Lamont Eel, took their oath to the constitution, and they also took their oath to their office? Good brother Lamont Eel, where is your public inauguration showing where you took the position of consul general because it was appointed to you by the head of state? It doesn't exist. So Moors run around saying, "Oh, Lamont Eel's rights have been infringed against. He's been kidnapped." No, he hasn't. Good brother Lamont Eel, I hate to tell you, and I'm telling you and your crew, because I'm telling you this in love. Your status was fictitious. And your Moorish American teacher should have told you that. First of all, you can't prove you're Moorish American. Second of all, you can't prove that you're Lamont Eel. Right now, you in a court, you in a jail, holding cell, trying to tell them, "I'm Lamont Eel." I'm asking you a question, good brother Lamont Eel. Why am I talking Lamont Eel? Because Lamont Eel represents all the Moorish Americans. I'm just using his name as, as an example. Good brother Lamont Eel, show the court that your state recognized you because you relinquished and you renounced your naturalized citizenship of the United States, and you returned to Morocco, to Moroccan state, accepted your consent to be a national of the Moroccan state. Does that exist? Did you have state ID from that Moroccan state? Did you have consul general credentials from the Moroccan state that was issued to you from the Moroccan state? The wazir, the head of state, gave you that identification. Did the state recognize the name Lamont Eel? Is that on the registration of a Moroccan state? Did the state recognize your name, and did you recognize the state? All these answers are rhetorical questions, aren't they? Because Lamont Eel, you know you can't answer these questions, and nobody in your crew can. And your crew is just an extension of the greater whole of Moorish Americans. It's all thinking they can apply these sovereign citizen principles that are patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious, and it's not your fault, good brother Lamont Eel. It's your Moorish American so-called master teachers' fault who didn't tell you the truth. And that's the problem. The Moors have been indoctrinated, and they're standing on a square that's based in deception. And I love all the Moors, especially the warriors. The Moors are all soldiers, but we got some warriors, warriors too, that'll jump out there and go really hard in the paint. And good brother Lamont Eel is one of them, and his talents are being wasted. He's rotting away in jail. If he'd have been, if he was taught about international law, he'd have been a very powerful consul general. But at the same time, good brother Lamont Eel, did you know consul generals can't accept emoluments? Do you know what emoluments is, good brother Lamont Eel? That means you can't be charging Moors any money to do your job that you took an oath to do in the first place. So please understand, good brother Lamont Eel, when you come up out of there and you wanna get back into statehood, that donation tab gotta go away. Alright? Let's continue. Okay, section two.
Section two. Each state party shall make these crimes punishable by appropriate penalties which take into account their grave nature. Three, paragraphs one and two of this article in no way derogate from the obligations of such parties under international law to take all appropriate measures to prevent other attacks on the person, freedom, or dignity of an internationally protected person. Article three, section one. Each state party shall take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over the crimes set forth in Article two in the following cases.
Pause. Let's go back up to section three before we go to Article three, but watch this. Section three of Article two. Paragraphs one and two of this article in no way derogate from the obligation of states, parties, states, plural, parties, plural, under international law to take all appropriate measures to prevent other attacks on the person, freedom of, or freedom or dignity of an internationally protected person. What does that mean? The United States of America as the state and its representative common known as the United States Intergovernmental Organization, since the United States International Organization is representing the United States of America, that means the United States has an obligation to what? Intervene anytime where their governors are doing something against diplomats of a Moroccan state. They're supposed to intervene and protect the diplomat of the Moroccan state. That's an obligation because they signed this contract. This is once again a dual responsibility, right? It's about prevention, and then there's the crime. Okay? So you're either preventing the crime, or you're committing the crime. You see how they're writing it? So if the United States federal government does not prevent the governor, the mayors, the magistrates, the police, and the sheriff from infringing upon the diplomats' rights of a Moroccan state, then now the United States of America and the United States, as well as the governor, can be held accountable of the crime and punishment. As what? Accomplices. Right? You remember they used the word accomplices? Okay, let's go back up. I do believe they used the word accomplice. When you're looking at Article two, section three, it puts the onus directly on the contracting party, i.e. the contracting state, which is the United States of America. But the United States of America has a power attorney called the United States, so the United States is obligated to let But the United States of America has a power attorney called the United States, so the United States is obligated to let the mayors know and the governors know what's up. Okay? Alright, so let's, let's get back now to Article three. That, now Article three will make sense now because now you understand a little bit more about Article two, section three, okay? So note it once again.
Article three, section one. Each state party shall take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over the crimes set forth in Article two in the following cases. A, when the crime is committed in the territory of that state or on board a ship or aircraft registered in that state. B, when the alleged offender is a national of that state. C, when the crime is committed against an internationally protected person as defined in Article one, who enjoys his status as such by virtue of functions which he exercises on behalf of the state.
Pause. Okay, have Moors picked up on a common theme? I haven't talked about this in a while, but let's take a look at it. You know how international law always puts the word state in capital S? No matter where you see the word state in the sentence, whether it's the beginning of the sentence, middle of the sentence, end of the sentence, the word state is always capitalized. Then why is it that the United States keeps using lowercase s? They'll say, oh, it's about, it's about a noun thing. It's a common noun. Right? It's a proper noun. No, 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 no. International law said capitalize the s. So why does the United States keep playing with the s? Why do they keep doing it? Lowercase, uppercase, lowercase, uppercase. Why do they do that? It's because they know that their so-called state of Alabama is a charter. And not really a state. This is what Moors have to understand. International law says, no, put the word state in all, in, in capital S. Lowercase, T A T E. Okay, that's what Moors gotta understand. Alright? So when you get in your Word doc, your Word doc, when you type it out, it, it'll keep trying to force you to put the word state in lowercase s. That's because Word doc is controlled by who? The United States. They, they wanna force people to use the lowercase s because that's what recognizes them, cause they're charters. When you use that capital S, they know that represents an organic state and not a charter. They know this. Okay? I wanted to bring that to the Moors' attention. But Article three. Each state party shall take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over the crimes. So what takes jurisdiction over the crime? A state. Not a self-appointed consul general. Not a self-appointed prime minister. Not a self-appointed duke. Not a self-appointed sheik or grand sheik or national sheik. We gotta get away from these self-appointed titles, cause the only thing that has power, true power and function is what? State. Read it again. Article three, section one. Each state party shall take such measures as may be necessary to establish its jurisdiction over the crimes set forth in Article two in the following cases. A, when the crime is committed in the territory of that state on, on board of a ship or aircraft registered in that state. B, when the alleged offender is a national of that state. And C, when the crime is committed against an internationally protected person as defined in Article one, who enjoys his status as such by virtue of the functions which he exercises on behalf of that state. That's too easy. This been out since nineteen seventy-three. Why haven't the Moorish American teachers told the Moors about this? You, you got Moors run around talking about they got the Moorish American consulate? How you got a consulate, but you don't have no state? Only a state can establish a consulate. So I mean, the consuls are all what? Void al adisio. They're northern void. They're patently privileged and arbitrary and capricious. And this is what Moors gotta understand. So as I start to close out, we'll finish this up in the next class, class one eleven. What should Moors take away from this thus far, what we're reading? Well, well, first of all, let's go to the board. Right now, we're, we're still reading over the charter in which Moorish American teachers won't read this to you. Charter pronounced as what? Nineteen forty-five. Nineteen forty-five. Charter, United Nations, chapter seven, articles thirty-one through fifty nine, thirty-one through fifty-nine. Action with respect to threats to the peace, breaches of the peace, and acts of aggression. Moors been dealing with this for decades. Right? Okay, but what is chapter seven really about? It's about invoking counterterrorism, reforms against any acts of aggression and use of force by colonists in Morocco, right? So what type of aggression? What type of threat? What type of breach? Well, a breach and threat and aggression against your state. Well, what about your state? Well, your state's got what? Officers and diplomats who represent your state. Right? This is what Moors gotta understand. I'm, I'm showing you now how to use international law as self-defense. But self-defense comes in the form of a pen first, then there's a physical aspect to it. But it steps to it. And international law has already set forth reforms, right? Laws that says, you can invoke this if and that you're a state party. And you're the competent authority of your state. Then the competent authority has what's called privileges and immunities. And anything you do against a national that's a diplomat or officer or protected person of the state is considered a crime and it's punishing. So as the Moors get into statehood, right? As the Moors start to get into statehood, all of these states right here, these are the recognized Moroccan states and this, this, this will grow. It's, it's, we're getting closer to recognizing other states. There are varying states of advancement. So I wanna say congratulations to the Moors who's still checking boxes, right? But right now, these collective states, or just one state, have privileges and immunities. Because their officers have pledged their allegiance to the state and they pledged allegiance to their office and took an oath. And now the state protects them and extends certain privileges and immunities to them. And now they're protected under what? International law, because the Moroccan states are parties to the charter. Were parties to several resolutions. So automatically, certain officers of your state automatically get privileges and immunity, such as the head of state, minister of foreign affairs, et cetera. And then the wazir, the head of state turns around and anybody's name, they put on a protected persons list or diplomat list, automatically gets privileges and immunity. So if the United States does something to infringe against our rights as officers of our state, immediately that's a crime and it's punishing. Alright? I end with that. Islam.